Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. It's Monday, January 13th. It's 7:06. We're going to, I'm going to point out, the emergency exits are to my right and left, your right and left, and they have an exit sign over the doors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is behind the curtain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board is going to go into executive session at 7:06. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Where's Brian?
Trustee issues, trustee matters, personnel.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Jennifer.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Did we all vote?
Yep, I voted. I voted. I, I.
George, are you?
Yes.
George is with us, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Amy, do we have any public comments? Oh, we did.
Oh, you did.
We motioned.
Okay, okay.
Right. I'll tell them. Okay. Okay. All right. We cannot accept the minutes because we didn't have any minutes. And we have minutes from the November meeting that we need to approve tonight. Would you like me to make the motion to pass the November minutes?
I apologize. I haven't reviewed these. I've got to certify them. So I didn't realize they were being restructured.
Moving on to the finance report. George?
Yes. Okay. I'm trying to think of the best way to say this instead of repeating at the same time. It's really, there's nothing remarkable.
That's good.
Everything is within the same pretty narrow limits. There are a little more number of outstanding checks, but that's really beyond our control. We send the checks out, and if people don't deposit them, there's nothing we can really do about it. Nauraki Smith is currently working on the document request for the year-end fiscal report and the 1099s for the vendors that were paid in 2024. But that's it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Quick question. Does Nauraki Smith also do our W-2s for the employees?
That I don't know.
How do W-2s get cut for the employees?
Amy? Amy, can you answer that?
Whoever processes the payroll probably does it.
Pay loss city does it.
Pay loss city cuts the W-2.
Thank you.
Just a procedural question.
Yeah.
So can I?
I'm not looking for trouble.
No, no, I didn't take it like that at all.
George, you want to?
I'd like to make a move to the Board to accept the December 2024 Treasures Report prepared by Nauraki Smith, including the bills as presented. Anybody second?
Second.
Discussion, anyone?
Hold on a second. Discussion.
All in favor? Aye, passed unanimously.
And the 2023 audit from PFK O'Connor-Davies is final as of January 6, 2025. Is there any questions or comments about what was provided in last month's meeting?
Were there any changes made to what the draft who were given last night?
No.
No.
No. Amy and I actually had a Zoom meeting with Claudia. And some of--
Who's Claudia?
Claudia, I'm sorry. Claudia is from PKF.
Okay.
And some of the things that we went over from the things that they were pointing out from 2023 are things we're already doing.
Right.
So we're on an upswing. All good things.
Okay, great.
Can I say, I'm sorry, I missed something on the minutes. We tabled the minutes for the last meeting and the one before it.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So the next two, the last two minutes, we're going to take up next time.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Do we need a motion?
No. It's been looked into, and we don't need it. Moving on to President's report. We're looking forward that tonight, we have Lothrap here tonight to give us our presentation, and we're looking forward to that. Also, that I'm announcing that it is my intention to run for another term as a library trustee. And the reason why it's been asked that existing trustees announce it in January because other, after meeting with some department heads, that they look to engage with people to run as trustees so once, but they don't, you know, well, we all want to make sure that we're working in sync with each other. So as soon as one could announce that they do plan to run, that would be great. So I'm announcing that I will run in the May election. And that is it for the President's report. Moving on to Library Director. Jennifer?
So in addition to the report that I provided to the Board, there were some things I wanted to mention. We've had some fantastic programs recently. I want to give a shout out to the Children's Room, who hosted a Noon Year's Eve program that was attended by, I think, close to 300 people. It was over? Okay.
It was close to 400.
Okay. Well, okay. Great, great. It was amazing. It was amazing. The two children's lib, well, all the children's librarians who are here did a fantastic job. And I know, I'm just looking, I'm looking at you as the representative from the Children's Room. But Mercy, Jacob, and Julianne, they did a phenomenal job. Myself and a couple of other employees were in here witnessing the whole thing, and it was great. And the family, I had such nice feedback from the families. There was confetti all over the library afterwards, which was so nice to see. So I want to give your team a shout out because that was really, really special. And it's my understanding that this was Jacob Denlowe's brainchild. So kudos to him and kudos to everybody in the Children's Room. I'd also like to give a shout out to all the folks who worked on the a cappella concert that took place this weekend. We had the New Blue Acappella Group. It's an all-female a cappella group from Yale. They were lovely. We had well over 200 people in attendance. We had a reception afterwards. People stayed up until about 9 o'clock for refreshments.
Intergenerational?
Yeah, intergenerational. There was just, it was wonderful. They were, they were wonderful. It was a wonderful event, so we have a lot to be proud of. Our plant propagation program, which was started by Tanya Nadas, is doing very successful, doing very well. There's been hundreds and hundreds of cuttings taken from the cuttings that have been donated by staff and other community members. We have some upcoming events which should be equally as amazing. Lunar New Year, which is being overseen by Robin, and a volunteer, which her name-- I'm sorry?
Christina Sche.
Christina Sche. And that will be held at the Chapacaw Performing Arts Center. That will probably be completely sold, not sold out, but completely full.
By tomorrow would be my guess.
Yeah, by tomorrow. Okay.
We opened registration at noon today, and we have sold 260 tickets.
Oh, okay. So if you want tickets, you better get a move on.
Yep.
Yeah. And the other program I just want to mention really quickly is being spearheaded by Amy Berger and Vicky Fuqua, which is the Monthly Spice Club, where every month they will be giving out a different spice and then inviting people to use that spice in a recipe, and then having a potluck dinner at the end of the month. And the first potluck will be on January 27th, and I myself am looking forward to attending that. So I also want to point out some other great initiatives. Julianne Pulasco and Denise Minson oversaw donations for the sharing shelf. They collected over 1,200 diapers and clothes and pajamas and socks and underwear, and all of that is going to be delivered, I think, this coming week. So I want to commend them as well. As far as finance, we have been approved for a grant by Senator Harkam's office to receive a grant for $10,769. That money should be, that check should be arriving very soon, and there'll be more to come on that. So we're working on the budget right now. I think we're going to be in good shape, but I'm working on it with Robin Friedman and Marge Perlman and Amy Caprellian, with, of course, input from the department heads and staff members. So that's a work in progress. Yes?
The grant is relative to the children's area?
The grant is not relative to infrastructure. It has to be used for programming. So once we get that money with all of their boundaries and constraints and parameters, we'll decide what we're going to put it towards.
Okay. So it's open?
Yeah.
Will it be something new?
Maybe, maybe. I mean, we'll see. You know, I have had a hard time getting information about it, but I just got the information today that the check is coming. And I spoke to Terry Kirshner, who's the head of WLS, and he said that there will be a letter with the parameters of how to use that money.
Great work.
It's great, well, yeah, it's great for everybody. So what else? What else?
Do you want to make mention to of these?
Yes, yes. So that's, that was also on my--
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I have hot tons of notes. So we will talk about this more in detail when Bob Gabalski and Marilyn Reed from Lothrap do their presentation, but one of the big things that they found was that the patio out in our main courtyard is a liability, and we're going to need to close that patio until further notice. I'll let Marilyn and Bob speak more to that, and that is something that we'll have to plan around moving forward for the summer concert series. So we--
How about being the--
Raised.
The upper deck?
Yes, the raised, the raised deck, yeah. We've also had some issues with the boiler recently. We've had Atlantic Westchester here several times. I will get a full report from Bill Link tomorrow about that, but there's been some issues with the heat in the building. Then one of the other, one of the signs outside of the building fell last week with the very strong winds that we had. So I am starting to look into replacing it with a digital sign, and I'm in touch with a company that the library had been in touch with about three or four years ago, to my best, to my knowledge. So we'll see where that takes us, and we'll see what the options are. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, in the Board packet, there is a proposal for an Eagle Scout project from a young man who grew up in this library and apparently know many of the children's librarians very well. He would like to do a promotional video for the library, and I think this is a win-win for everyone. And it would entail, he would come here with a team of people over the course of probably two or three days and interview probably some staff, interview some patrons. They have permission slips, you know, saying that they, people agree to be in the video, but it is just to do a promotional piece for us. And I know other libraries have done things like this, and they've put them on their email signatures and their websites and social media, and I just think this could be a great thing for us. So I would love it if the Board would, you know, want to discuss it or just say, go ahead, but I think, I think it's a win-win.
Is Tom Keen the scout master?
I don't know who this--
He's a lot of few--
It looks like it's a troupe out of Croton.
Yeah, it's a troupe out of Croton.
Yeah, so.
Would you like the Board to vote on?
Not necessarily, but I wanted to bring it up just in case there was any, any questions, comments, concerns or anything like that.
Has it been run by department heads?
Not yet, not yet. It literally just happened on Friday, I think.
Okay.
And so I didn't have a chance to tell anybody else.
So surprise. Does the Board have any thoughts or questions?
I think scout projects are wonderful. I am a big supporter of Scouting USA, which no longer is called Boy Scouts, we're not doing scouting USA, given the fact that they now have both boys and girls. And I think that if we can encourage more Eagle Scouts to build projects around the library, that would be fantastic.
We have a number, I want to say six years ago, an Eagle Scout under Tom Keen, who was directly behind the work to the side of the library, where he cleaned out all of the stream beds, et cetera. It was a massive, it's a great project.
Wow. This young man happens to be a budding filmmaker, so I think--
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that's--
Just make sure, you know this, that whenever young people are videoed, that they've got permission from their parents, right?
Yep.
Because that's always a tricky issue, whenever you're making--
They're going to have permission slips.
I think it indicated in there that he had already gotten--
From under 18.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or even over 18, too.
Right. No, I think they want anybody who's willing to participate to sign off.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent. If I could just make a comment, that that sign issue, I think, is an opportunity for us right now.
Yes.
I think that it is something we should lean into big time, and I think that I'd be happy to spend the extra dollars to get something very nice there. And I think it's worth it, and I think that now that the signs have been damaged, it's a perfect opportunity to go big.
Okay.
Jen, you'll find Bill Link has done some research into that as well.
He has, and he's provided a contact for me, so I'm in touch with that person, and I'm hoping I can finally connect with them tomorrow. And I'll have more information as we move forward, so, yeah.
Fantastic. Okay. Moving on to Committees. Finance Committee, George?
Nothing to add--
Okay.
--from the prior report.
So Building and Grounds, where, do you mind, Jen, if we go through, if we do Lothrap's presentation under New Business? Okay, great. Thank you. Personnel Committee, John?
So we're going to do, ask the Board to approve a stipend for Amy Caprellian to do the minutes for the Library Board. The minutes have been a thing that we need to do, and I think that having someone like Amy, who's very, who's obviously at our meetings all the time and probably is very capable to do that, so the Board to approve a stipend of 2,500 annually to take minutes at Library Board meetings. So I've moved with the Board to vote on that. Second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
So as discussion, there's an official title that goes with each, what's Lisa's title for the school district?
I don't know. Yeah, I'll pull it up in one second.
It's like clerk. At one point, we had proposed our clerk assistant for the role, and then there was all this change in their life, and it didn't make sense to go down that path. That's it.
Okay. So do you want to, you think this should be called like Library Clerk?
Because there are official roles with that, and the minutes are one for presentation to the secretary, and a stipend is recommended, so that follows with what we're talking about.
My only question regarding that is if that gets us into the thicket of civil service rules and regulations. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think giving Amy a stipend for doing this additional item is okay. Like, we're acknowledging that there's an extra piece that she's doing, which is good with us in our dealings with civil service. I don't know if a title is going to, that's, that's a very good point. It could, could get us in the thick of it.
If only because--
We don't--
I don't know.
Okay.
Do you want to say something, Pam?
I think, well, I think that for cleanness, I think that the motion needs to just be reworded as, as--
It's not promoting. Library District Clerk, there it is. And the one differential issue we'd have to get on the books. It's like a--
Here, like here? Just within the library?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So then the motion should look like that move that approve Amy Caprellian to be the library's district clerk, the library's, it doesn't say, doesn't have to be district--
Can I?
Okay. Library move that the Board approve Amy Caprellian as, as a library district clerk at a salary of $2,500 annually to take--
Pam, I, I, I'm not objecting to any of that. My, my question that I asked, though, was, having had prior experience with Westchester County Civil Service rules, do we foresee any unexpected bureaucratic snags by making a motion to bring Amy in at this title rather than merely just simply having the Board give her a stipend?
You know, the short answer is, I don't know.
Right.
The short answer is, I don't know.
Right.
Having said that--
It's not a librarian duty, sorry?
No, no, no. Please share your--
It's a board.
It's a board role.
Her acting on behalf of the Board in addition to her responsibilities.
Got it. So as far as you understand, Jennifer, you don't see anything in terms of us getting sort of caught in some civil service bureaucratic--
We had looked into it with the prior assistant, who was not civil service--
Got it. Okay.
And including like legal, we've gone through all the hoops.
Right. No, I understand. Okay. All right.
I have one question or comment about the stipend for Amy.
Yeah.
Instead of making it $2,500 annually, shouldn't it--
I was just random, because who's the word scribe, who's done it before without problems?
I'm sorry, can you use the word scribe?
For what Amy's running--
Go to the back.
Who's done it before without problems?
Okay, so library scribe is--
Oh, okay. Versus--
Versus secretary, she's a board is scribe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
Okay.
So my, my question or comment is, instead of it being $2,500 annually, shouldn't it be per event? Because if Amy doesn't take the notes for some reason, she's out on vacation, she's sick or something like that, and someone else does it, then we have to worry about, okay, so we're still paying $2,500 for it. She wasn't here to take the minutes, much less write them up. So wouldn't it be better to make it, whatever it is, $208, $210 per, per diem kind of situation?
Yeah.
As opposed to an annual?
Good point.
There's some logic behind that, George.
Yeah.
Well, I hope so. I mean, that would also allow us the opportunity in case someone, since Amy was out and someone wanted to take that job for the, that event, for that board meeting, we could do it that way. Just something to consider.
Can we just take that and divide it by 12?
Yeah, we can--
Well, that's what it is, 208 and change.
208, 33.
33.
Right.
Per instance?
Per meeting, per meeting.
Per, per monthly meeting, right? And that wouldn't include special meetings, or maybe we could add on special meetings?
Correct, so that actually works in Amy's benefit.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, 208 per meeting.
Correct.
That would include the monthly board meetings and any special meeting that might be called.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to call her, is it, so we should do--
Scribe.
Board, Board Scribe? I know you said your call. Well, I am, I'll go with--
It's past precedent.
What?
It's past precedent.
Past precedent, right. I think you said past president.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So I'm sorry. Okay. So, all right, so once again, the motion to, to appoint Amy, Amy Caprellian, Board Scribe at, at the stipend of $208--
And 33 cents.
And 33 cents a meeting--
Per meeting.
Per meeting.
Or per meeting.
To commence with tonight's meeting. Okay. Do we have a second? Oh, we should wait to vote till Brian comes back. He went to the back. Oh, okay. So we, we don't have to wait. As Jen noted, we do a befoream. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Jen, second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, great. Thank you, all.
And then the other personnel motion is move that the Board approve a raise for Renee Wong, Elisa Fink, and Zoya Nabi to 1650 an hour to meet the New York State minimum wage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Can I just ask who, what roles they fill at the library here?
They are pages.
Pages, okay. So raise, approve a raise for Renee Wong, Elisa Fink, and Zoya Nabi, library pages to 1650, which is, I guess, the new, as of January, the 2025 New York State minimum wage. Okay. Which is law, so there you go.
Any discussion?
Well, I think we're doing discussion right now.
Right, okay.
Okay, so now we're going to vote--
Oh, I thought you were asking for clarification of who they are.
No, 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 no. That was, I just wanted to know who they were, and they were doing this because we have to follow state law, which is a good thing.
Correct.
Yeah, excelsior. So there you go.
Good.
Yes.
Very true.
So, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
George? Okay.
Good.
John, anything to report with policy and bylaw?
Nothing with policy and bylaws.
I actually have something new, and I'm sorry for throwing this at you, but it's a simple thing. So--
The museum pass?
We have a museum pass policy that was written and approved by the Board, and we are one of two libraries in the entire system that has a Board-approved policy. And I would really like to rescind the policy so that--
Discretion.
Staff can use their own discretion when it, and that we, we can make changes and exceptions as we see fit without having to go through a process to have a policy again. So I'm asking if you would consider rescinding this policy moving forward.
Okay. So the proposal is to rescind the library's museum pass policy that was adopted in 2010 and adapt and updated in 2023 in an effort to give greater professional decision-making to the library staff. Do I have a second?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, second.
Yeah, not a second, okay. Discussion, yeah.
Is the discretion you're looking for with respect to the museums that are included or who gets passes?
It's in relationship to the very stringent rules that are on here.
Like one per family per month?
Yeah. So like if a pass isn't, if I bring the pass back and I can't use it for another X amount of days, but it's just sitting there, what's, what point is that? You know, so, and also like the loan period, you know, if we decided like, oh, well, this particular pass might be better if we do five days instead of four days, or three days instead of four days, it just gives us a lot more flexibility for it.
I think this makes total sense, and particularly given the fact that, Pam, you spent so much time cleaning up the policies over the last several months.
That's okay.
That it's, makes sense for us to not, not have policies on the books that actually That it's, makes sense for us to not, not have policies on the books that actually limit the professional decision-making for people in the library.
I have one question about the policies. If there's a family that does use them, if you take it for three days and it's a fiscal pass, that precludes someone from using it any one of those days, when you're really only taking it for one day, you're not taking it to use for three consecutive days.
True.
So I think that that might be a little too flexible. I mean, if I borrow it on a Saturday because I'm using it on Sunday, I bring it back on Monday. Is that why it's three days?
Correct, that's, yeah.
I get it then. Withdrawn.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye? Good.
Thank you.
So that's the Policy and Bylaws Committee report.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna circle back. Moving on to, we welcome Lothrop and Associates by Bob Gabeloski and Marilyn Reed. And the board, I invite you to, we're gonna change our seats, so we can see. Thank you for your patience. Not a problem.
We have two sets of project lists that we can call on, if you'd like to. Yeah, we can share.
Well, first I want to say thank you everyone for inviting us here to make the presentation about the Chappaqua Library Conditions Assessment Report. I am going to start out by saying the report is 166 pages long. So we are not going to take you through every single page, page by page. We're going to do our best to give you an overview, but we do want you to stop us at any point in time if you have questions about any section that we're talking about, because we do want it to be interactive. So please do that. We are not shy about answering questions. So we'll get right into it. I'm, I'm sorry, let me introduce myself first, even though we've had some introductions. My name is Marilyn Reed. I'm the Senior Interior Designer at Lothrop Associates Architects. So I'm gonna start off, and Bob and I will be switching back and forth on different sections of the report. So we were actually tasked with doing a full building conditions assessment for the Chappaqua Library. And what that means is, we took a team of people from Lothrop Associates, a couple of architects, Bob was there, Mark Portfields, who is also one of our architects, who's been with the firm for a very long time, myself, who I, I did the interiors portion of the work. We also had an engineering firm that came in and did the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing portion of the work. And we evaluated pretty much every nook and cranny of the building. And that would be everything on the outside of the building, structural, everything on the outside of the building, the roof. And Bob, you can add anything in if I'm missing anything, exterior facade. The, and then the mechanical people did the mechanical, the electrical, plumbing. I did also the interiors portion of the building, which would mean looking at things like furniture, the finishes, the wall finishes, the flooring, the paint, is the ceiling peeling or anything of that nature, the lighting, things of that nature. So that's what we were tasked with. We also took a look at any of the documents that were in archives here at the library, and we borrowed some of those and were able to scan them and bring them back to the library, which was really very helpful for us. We also, we go into the next. So we did this all on September 25th of 2024. We looked at general conditions, excuse me. Observing any kind of deficiencies, we looked at ADA accessibility, the foundation walls, any kind of load-bearing structural elements. As I said, exterior walls, doors and windows, roof structure, the mechanical, the electrical, the fire protection, site elements like the plazas and the courtyards, and things of that nature. These were the drawings that we looked at as we were going through the assessment as backup. So there's quite a list of drawings that we did review. So the original building was built in 2000, I'm sorry, the original, there was the original building, and then there was the children's room addition that was built in 2019. It's in fairly good condition. The exterior entrance plaza and the courtyard paving are in fairly poor condition, where the, the flags are pretty severe, and they're actually constituting a very severe risk to people. So that's something that, you know, they're raising up in the paved areas, and that's why we're talking about closing down the courtyard area too. The split ribbed facade is in good to fair condition. The cast stone facade will need some cleaning, and the existing garden wall is in poor condition. So those were some of the things that we found, just in the overall observations. Okay, Bob, you're gonna take it away with exterior?
Bob Gabeloski, Principal in Charge of Library Projects at Lothrop Associates. Thanks for having us. When we look at buildings, we look at them in totality. So we start with the outside and then move to the inside, because our mantra is, you need good boots, good coat, and a good hat. If you don't have all three of those, Mother Nature gets in. And what you want to do is keep Mother Nature out, because when buildings get wet, they deteriorate. So we looked at all of the exterior walls of the main body of the library and the children's library addition. We also looked at the garden walls, because your building isn't just four walls with nothing outside. You have courtyards and gardens and paving and entrance plaza all around the building. So your exterior walls are made of a split face concrete block. And the top of the walls are sort of hatted with a wood-finished cornice or overhang. And you see in the bottom picture, some of the problems with some of the components of the walls. That joint is open between those two stones at the top of the wall. And that joint turns into a crack underneath as it zigs and zags toward the split face block. And every time there's an open joint, water gets in through cohesive properties and capillary action. And as we go to the bottom of the wall, where all these pieces of concrete block are mortared together, those joints in the northeast climate want to move around over time because of the nearly 100-degree temperature swing from winter to fall. And when that happens, you get these microscopic open joints in all the mortar joints. And if you go and walk around and look really closely, you'll see hairline open joints on a lot of the split face block. And when that happens, water gets in there, and we all know what happens with water. When it freezes, it expands. And when it expands, it deteriorates the mortar. And when water can sit there and debris from the atmosphere can collect there, you get green growth. And when that happens, the cycle of deterioration is accelerated. And you see a lot of it here in these two photographs. The top photograph is where the wall meets the foundation wall, the kind of grayish deteriorated coating at the bottom. Above the stone is the waterproofing. The waterproofing's seen better days, sort of eroded. And the heavy joint of mortar at the bottom of the stone on top of the waterproofing is cracked and open. Picture at the bottom shows you the staining on the block. Everybody thinks concrete is durable and sort of bulletproof. It's actually very porous, takes on water, and when it's not smooth, like this is, it's a rusticated split face block, it holds more water very easily, and dirt from the atmosphere can get there and make it look unsightly. This happens all around the building. Okay? When we move up to the roof, the bottom picture, you've had the roof coated recently. It just needs TLC and maintenance. Keep it clean. Keep the drains clean. And you're not going to get growth up there that is dangerous. It's very slippery. And that growth can deteriorate the membrane. You have a couple of roofs on here, and then it was coated, right? So even that coating, when it's got this debris on it, can degrade over time because that big, big orange circle in the sky has its way with ultraviolet light. As we move around the library, we come to the children's library addition, which is a newer addition. Not terribly old, but you can see, when you have a modern piece of architecture like this, and this doesn't have split face block, it's got smooth block, it's already starting to get dirty. Because it doesn't have a big overhang, and the water that falls on the coping stones on the top of the wall run down the wall and, and soil the wall. A minor point, where the new wall in the bottom picture meets the existing wall, that joint, whenever you do something new against something old, they don't play well in the sandbox together. And so you need to accommodate their tendencies to want to be their own thing with what's called an expansion joint. So that when they move differentially, when they're different materials, they will, because they have different coefficients of expansion, you're accommodating that. This also is likely to need a seismic joint. So when the addition was built, the building code requires that an addition that's built against an existing building can vibrate differently in an earthquake, so that when the two existing and new addition collide, they don't damage one another. See this white efflorescence in the smooth stone on the children's library addition? That tells us that water has gotten into the stone and can't get out. So what happens when stone takes on water and it can't dry to the exterior or drain out behind it, and it holds that water for a prolonged period of time, you get efflorescence. It needs to be cleaned because the salts in that efflorescence can begin to damage the surface of the stone. It also tells us that the mortar joints between the stones are likely to have micro-open joints that are letting the water in. So none of these are earth-shattering things, they just need to be dealt with. When we come to the garden walls, because they're freestanding and they're exposed to Mother Nature on both sides, meaning the building wall, like in this room, sees the outside only on one side, and it's got heat on the inside. These garden walls don't have that. They're, they fall victim to Mother Nature from both sides and the top. And the growth is promoted in conditions like this, especially where you have this very lush plant material next to or on top of the wall. It all looks pretty, but when you bring shade and moisture together, it can wreak havoc. And you see this. When we walked Jennifer around the building, she saw all the open joints around this wall. So it needs TLC to take care of it. One of the ends of the walls is really scabrous. We don't really know what happened, but it somehow needs to be finished off and closed because it's wide open. These split face concrete block where they meet, the mortar joint is open on the garden walls more so than on the building wall. You see it in the bottom picture, that sort of dark vertical stripe right here? Right? That needs to be taken care of. Here's a displaced stone at the end of that wall. This is the outside of the garden wall. And you see the building wall, which is protected by the cornice above, isn't soiled at all. But the garden wall, which sees Mother Nature from above and on both sides, is very dirty. The gates, they're wood, they're deteriorated, they need to be replaced. They're not egress compliant, simple fix. The windows are original, on the original portion of the building. Windows are different material from the block, and when you get a metal material next to a concrete material, they want to move even more differentially. So taking care of the sealant around the windows and any broken seals in the glass, it's just routine maintenance that has to be done. And it happens even under the deep front overhang. This is right near your front door. You can see the windows are deteriorated. It's not really moisture that has caused the problem here, it's temperature. The top photograph, there's a painted steel lintel that's holding up the split face block above. That's rusting, needs to be dealt with. The bottom picture shows the courtyard. You have a lawn area with a lower pea gravel area, and then an upper area and a ramp down to the doors that are concrete with exposed aggregate. And the flags of concrete, the big pieces of concrete, as we call them, flags, are separated, and the gaps are really wide. And because of how porous this is, they've been able to differentially settle. And that has caused trip hazards that are very pronounced. And if someone trips and falls, it's gonna be a problem. A shot looking down the ramp toward the new restrooms, and the courtyard is on your left. The front entrance in the bottom photograph shows the deep overhang, the front glass wall. This circular planter, much like the garden walls, is exposed to soil on the inside, Mother Nature on the outside, and Mother Nature from above, so it's experiencing the same kind of trouble that the split face block garden walls are experiencing. The flags of concrete at the entry plaza, again, exposed aggregate. The original design was to have dug fir wood expansion joints in between the flags of concrete. A lot of those are rotted away, and so you get a big gap. That's a trip hazard. The children's library addition has these sort of mesh screens that are intended to diffuse the sunlight so that it doesn't beat into the interior. Works very well. The problem is these galvanized steel channels at the bottom are very sharp. So as long as no one goes near them, it's great. If children are near them, it could be a hazard. Simple to take care of. Just keep moving along here. So here in the top picture, you're getting a really good example of a very deteriorated hollow, painted hollow metal door and glass transom above. In the lower picture, doors that are in better shape. Another door in terrible shape.
Do you say terrible shape when it's doors? Is it a modern concept?
They're ready to be replaced. It's, so a hollow metal door is a thin sheet of metal over a structured core. And they're usually galvanized steel that get painted. When the paint wears off and the galvanization, the galvanized coating becomes deteriorated, they rust. And it's a thin layer of steel that rusts right through, and a door is easy to replace. The overhang out here at the entry to the theater is all wood. It's seen better days. A lot of the wood on the exterior of the building has seen better days. It needs to be addressed. Joints are open at the corner. The finish on it is deteriorated. It's been repaired somewhat. Yeah. So let's just say the repairs could have been better. You see open joints here. Birds can get in here around the steel column. The copper drip edge and gutter and leader inlet all need to be tended to. Copper's not rusted through, but needs to be cleaned and open solder joints repaired. The wood louvers have carpenter bee damage. Again, a simple fix. The mechanical room doors are in trouble. They're hard to close. So again, a simple fix. Book drop outside is loose and water can run right down in from the top down. The wood that clads the hat on the building is in trouble. The finish is virtually gone. And a lot of the wood is either no longer securely attached or needs to be replaced because it's rotted. The top photo is the sort of metal cladding at the top of the children's library edition. It's in good shape. When we come to the bottom, that concrete that is at the base of the children's library edition is already cracking and it's obvious that it's been cracked for a while because somebody tried to patch it. The joint is open, so water gets in there and sits, gets under this slush of concrete and sits against the bottom of your windows underneath it. The roof is just dirty. Clean it, drain it, clean the roof drains. Get safe, high traction control walking pads up there so that your maintenance personnel don't slip. This is water. It's not solid water. It's not ice. It was very slick that they were up there. The code requires that when mechanical equipment is required to be serviced and it's within 10 feet of a roof edge, there's supposed to be a guardrail there. So you have that in a few locations. Doesn't mean the entire roof needs a guardrail. So you can either move the equipment, so it's 10 foot, one inch away from the edge, or put up a guardrail. Again, a pretty simple fix. Has anybody been up on the roof? So you have this mechanical penthouse up there. The original structure was structured like an umbrella. You know, when you pop up an umbrella, you see all the spokes. So here are some of the spokes. You have a center column, which comes down through the main portion of the library. And then the spokes go down and touch the roof so that the umbrella can't tip. A lot of the spokes are clad with a material that is deteriorated. It just needs to be restored so that the steel inside that cladding, which is the spoke, doesn't deteriorate because that would be a structural problem. And that umbrella goes all the way around. You see the cladding here in the lower picture. And that's looking from the inside out. And then that's the cladding with deterioration on it. Here is some of the mechanical equipment that's within 10 foot of the roof edge. Some of the wood wainscoting that's literally gone. This is looking at a newer portion of the roof. Right here, it's in better shape. See this ring of stone? You have that on top of all of your walls. It's concrete coping. That sits on top of the split face block, sort of short sections of stone. The joints are open on all of that coping. Just needs to be taken off, reset, resealed so that you seal the brim of your hat. Some are shifted, yeah. And that happens when mortar or sealant fails and water gets in there and freezes in the winter and causes frost heave. And then when it melts again and the stone relaxes back into natural position, it sort of shifts. If it shifts a little bit, you're not so worried about it. If it shifts a lot and can fall off, it's heavy. The stairs on the roof are treacherous. Treacherous at best. It's, yeah, they've, they've got to be replaced. They're, they're in real trouble. They're wood. More close up views of the wood wainscoting inside the mechanical room. Here's that joint between the children's library edition and the original building. It's a hard mortar joint. It's already eroding the mortar there. Looking up at the underside of the metal deck that was painted. So the paint is gone. It just needs to be scraped, primed and painted. Looking down on a roof, just dirty. Concrete in the upper picture. The sidewalks, especially out on this side of the building, have settled. Or the curbs have, which are concrete, have spalled and somebody's patched them with a thin layer of, we call it peanut butter, concrete. And it's already spalling off. So it's another safety hazard. This is looking at a cladding around the spoke of the umbrella. And you can see there's a little bit of rust in there. It needs to be gotten after soon. Out front, the flags of concrete are different color, exposed concrete aggregate. Some rusting, which means there's ferris laden aggregate in the concrete. A lot of it is slipped, settled, cracked, spalled, missing, chipped. Needs to be dealt with. This is the circular planter. When they originally built it, there are two concrete pores. And this cold joint is open and letting moisture in. Top photograph, see this little piece of wood here? That's a remnant of the dug fir that was between the concrete flags. It's rotted away completely. Yeah, I mean, it lasted a long time. So, you know, so it, I wouldn't use dug fir anymore because new dug fir is not old dug fir. Right? So teak, epay, something like that, right? The bottom photograph, looking up the sort of paved walk along the north side of the building. Here is the peanut butter and the this differentially settled curbs and cracking concrete. Cracking concrete. It's a trip hazard. Courtyard. There's, you know, a serious tripper in the flag of concrete. So, you know, if people watch their step, nobody's going to get hurt. If somebody's not looking and they fall and break a knee, as my colleague Mark said here, they're going to own the library and build an apartment tower here. So it's sort of the standing joke. It's not, it's funny until it's not funny, right? When somebody falls and hurts themselves. So it just needs to be taken care of.
But when you say taken care of, does that mean any money or hair or?
Yeah, so. Well, there's a whole range of options. And it comes down to how long do you want it to last and how much do you want it to cost? At Crestville Public Library, they had a floor inside the library that had settled three inches at one end. We brought it back into position with expanding foam, structural foam under the concrete slab. Without replacing it. So all of this, it's a choice. Replace it, cover it, jack it up. Right? Rip it out, right? The steps out, you know, it's not accessible. You've got to step there. Which in this climate, you say, great, water can't run in under the door. But the person in the wheelchair can't get out. So. Wide, very wide joints. It all looks great, right? But if you're there at a performance and you're, you catch a toe or you're wearing pointed heels or whatever. So with that, that's the exterior. So over to the interior now.
Just one exterior question. With the raised platform that is automatic in the main corridor, presuming you're going to fix this so we can utilize it. Is there railing? Does the wall have any sort of railing there?
So the building code requires a railing when two horizontal surfaces are farther apart by more than 30 inches. So no. But that's a minimum. If it's unsafe to you, you want a railing there. Like this here, this railing, there's about a 16 inch step here from this floor to that first level seating. That railing's not required. But you have it there. So if someone who stands up and turns around and puts their coat on was false, it changes. So it's really elective on whether or not you want to do more.
Any other questions on the exterior before we move on to the interior? No?
I, I, I don't know if you can answer this question. Some of this was like just sort of normal wear and tear. Some of it also looked like it shouldn't have been maintained 10 years ago. That this sort of be the libraries that I go to.
It's all of the above. And, you know, people get into a building when it's brand new. You get 10 years down the road and you start to go, oh, the paint's a little faded. 10 more years, you go, oh, there's a joint, there's a crack over there. You know, it isn't a problem until it's a real problem and presents itself. Like when a roof leaks, you know it and you fix it. Stone moves, the concrete cracks. When does it reach that threshold to make you fix it now?
Okay, one exterior question. What's your estimation of our roof?
So you have what's called a Trunkco Alpha Guard coating on there. And we use it a lot. Over existing roofs that are not at the end of their useful life. And it can last 20 years. But read the fine print, your Trunkco warranty. You got to maintain it. You got to keep it clean. Debris prematurely degrades the material. Water is not supposed to pond more than 48 hours. So you got to get on it. Not that the folks at Trunkco, because we know them really well, are going to sort of stand on it. But if they see something and it turns into a big problem because you haven't called them in time or didn't maintain it, then you're going to pay for the repair. So get out there once a month, clean the drains, sweep the water off. And it's not Trunkco's fault, right? You have a roof, you have two roofs on there and the bottom one is hot. And then you put a coating on. And they repaired some areas. But you can't fix the integral roof pitch problem with just coating. They promoted better drainage where they could in the repair areas.
But there is a pitch problem on that roof.
Flat roofs. So, you know, you're supposed to have a quarter inch of your foot. Architects in this era wanted eighth inch per foot or zero. You know, just try setting water here and the floor is level and the drain's over there and the water fills up and the drain sets pouring the water down. It's going to suck this way. That's true. So you've got to, when you do the new roof at the end of this 20 year Alpha Guard warranty, that pitch problem will get fixed. And it's easy to fix.
Sorry, just to follow up on that. So how, how much time recognizing the inherent characteristics? What would you estimate as the, if that's not?
I spoke to Justin about it. Justin Fry at Trunkco, known him well for 30 years. He said, you know, if you maintain it, it'll last the life of the warranty. So when did you have it done? Four years ago. So you've got 16 years. And my colleague Mark and I walked every inch of that roof through the water. I didn't see any open seams. We didn't do any probes or any non destructive evaluation. But we didn't see any problems. But clean it, get the water off, open the roof drains, get the traffic pads down. It'll be fine. And if you get Trunkco out here when there's a problem right away and they fix it, it's a small problem. And if they're out here looking, if they see something else, you can fix it too. And just repair the Alpha Guard coating and you can get more life.
Okay, so on to the interior observations that we made. When we look at the interior of the library, we look at the six zones of the library. And those six zones, and starting from the moment that you walk into the library, you're going to walk into the welcome zone. And that would include the entry vestibule, the circulation area. And that's going to be the first impression that everyone has walking into the library. The children's zone, obviously you've got this nice big new, fairly new children's room. Then you have the adult zone, which is also right off of your welcome zone. Which is, you know, the open area of the library where you've also got an information reference desk for people to gain, get information. You've also got tables and chairs there and computers there for, for people to be able to study and work. And then you've got a teen zone. So you've, you've got a separate teen room. And then you've got some areas where you've got teen stacks as well. And then you've got the community zone. And we're actually in the community zone. The theater is part of the community zone. The gallery hallway is part of the community zone. Study rooms are. And any kind of program rooms that you would have, the small program rooms that you would have. And then the service and support zone. And that would include anything like the, the library director's office, the staff areas, the staff workstations, the staff space behind the circulation desk is part of the service and support zone. The break room, the book processing supplies, any kind of storage areas, that's all considered part of the service and support zone. Even really the public restrooms, you could kind of put into that as well. So in going through the observations, we really went through the, all of those different zones and observed everything in all of those zones. And, and you'll probably note that in, just as you go through the report, that any of the bullet points also have photos and pages noted on here so that any of the notes, you can go to the actual photograph and page and see the reference to the note. So again, we're going through a lot of that. So right here, you're starting with the welcome zone, the entry vestibule. What, what is the first impression when you walk into the entry vestibule? And here's what, going through the interiors, we highlighted things like, you know, stains on, on the floor, stains on the carpet. Any ceiling tiles that might be starting to like, look like they may be stained and that may have water coming through. Any scratches or stains or marks on the gypsum board or this one on the lower photographs. There's some nails popping and scuffs on the, the gypsum board. This is all still in the welcome area. The bottom photograph, you're going to see some areas where the carpet tile's popping up. And the carpet itself looks a little bit on the dated side in many locations. The top area is, oh, thank you. The top area is, oh, thank you. You can, you want it? Thank you. Okay, so the top image is of the circulation desk. And if you look behind the circulation desk, you're looking right into the workroom, which is not necessarily really a very nice image for your patrons to see in the workroom behind. But, and the desk itself, there's some other images in here that show that the desk itself is actually worn. The flooring behind is worn. That's the bottom photograph. You can see here, the top image shows that the countertop is very worn. The ceiling tiles above are, have got some mortar damage to them. There's some damage on the walls to the right-hand side. That's the column at the end of the circulation desk. Just some, you know, minor things. I mean, as Bob was saying about the exterior, a lot of these things are very minor. But the transition strip between the ceramic tile and the carpet is damaged right in front of the circulation desk. I think the chair has seen its a better day. Same thing with the shelving, which is self-serve where the reserves are. Some other, you know, more damage to the ceiling tiles. Then we go into the children's zone, which is actually in very good condition. Really not a lot to, you know, a few little minor scrapes and things on some of the wood shelving and the window bay. You know, some holes from things being put into some of the doors and screws and screw holes. Some wire management issues. I think that probably the biggest issue is the mesh screens that are covering up the heating units underneath the benches along the windows. There's a lot of debris that's falling back there. And also, those are not very secure.
It's bent forward.
Yeah. And if any small child goes under there, that's very sharp. Just, you know, a few other, just, you know, these are minor things that can be fixed very easily. But, you know, just some damage to the columns, really minor damage to the columns, just some staining. And it looks like just a big glob of, what do you call that?
Caulk?
Caulk or?
Paint?
Paint or something. I'm not sure exactly what that is. Some more water damage on the ceiling tiles, some scratches on the door. That's the egress door in the children's room. More, it looks like more water damage. That goes out to the, that door goes out to the courtyard in the children's room. There's, it's kind of hard to see in this photograph, but there's a little bit of damage to the glass. It's, it looks like some of the,
It's when I'm ready.
Like glazing is kind of coming off. Again, just scratches on, you know, some damage to dirt maybe on the restroom doors. That's to the toddler's restroom. This is inside of the family restroom. Just overall maintenance issues, really. This is, the top one is, there's a mobile book cart that's just doing some damage to the wall because it's just bagging up against the wall. And you can see just, you know, the bottom kick plate of this door, which I believe this door goes into the back of house area, if I'm not mistaken. That's been damaged. The tack board in the coloring area is a bit tattered. There's some, you know, just mostly scuff marks. This is all still in the children's area. Some water damage and a couple of the ceiling tiles. One ceiling tile up above near the upper windows that looks like it's popping out. This is the door going into the children's program room, which looks rather tattered, scratched and scuffed. This is inside the children's program room. The cabinetry is pretty worn. And the top picture is the interior door. It's got some scuff marks. The power outlet, actually, I think Bill Link said that that has been completed. So that's why I put that note in there. The sink itself and the countertop is a little bit outdated. And then throughout the room, there's, you know, some pilling on the the acoustical wall covering throughout the room in the children's program room. Scuff marks on the, on the baseboard heating units where it's been, you know, painted that bright blue color. Then we get into the adult zone and you can just see, you know, some delamination on the lounge chairs and some damage to the bookcases. The top photograph just from, there's a plant sitting there. You know, just minor things that can be easily fixed, easy repairs. Maybe the chairs either need to be replaced or reupholstered. There's some just stains on the chairs. You can see the staining on the top, the staining on the carpet on the top. The tables and chairs for the study areas are just kind of a, the tables all seem to be the same, but the chairs are kind of just a mishmash of different chairs. So that was, that was the reference, the reason for that photograph. They may be comfortable, but they're a little outdated, so. Staining on the carpet, that's the top photo, is the world language media area. Staining on the ceiling tiles, that's near the patron copier look area. And you can see like some of the ceiling tiles even towards the back of that photograph look a little wobbly and the pull box seems to be a little bit, I think it's, I can't remember if it was not mounted correctly. It's not ADA compliant in terms of how it's mounted. And then the wall in study room three has got a lot of scuff marks. So these are just really mostly like maintenance issues. Yeah.
So another staffer which walked over there and bringing out that there is a huge draft. You guys were here, it was pretty long, you guys were here.
Yeah.
There's a huge draft coming in.
I put my hand in there. See this little piece of metal? It's very sharp. Your concrete block wall is two layers of block with a gap in the middle and two inches of rigid insulation. And if you draw at this end, look in the gap where the crash enclosure wall meets the building wall. You can look straight in and see that a lot of the insulation inside there, at that end, works open. The rigid insulation is just like a styrofoam cooler. It's deteriorating. So when this building was designed and built, it meant energy code back then, but nowhere near meets energy code today. So not surprising that there are drafts everywhere. We did a blower door test in this building. I'm sure it would be like a six.
Top photo is an overall view of the teen program room. The bottom photo is just showing that the rubber door bumper is missing on the teen program room. I don't know where it went, but it's not there. These are just some photographs of the study room one. The door squeaks when you open it. And then there's some damage on the, on the wall on the left-hand side in study room one. You can see some damage above study room two where the red circle or oval is. I should, I should know the difference between a circle and an oval. Study room two on the interior, it's a little bit hard to see in the photograph, but there's some damage on the wall on the inside where the somewhat circle oval is. And this is the, one of the program rooms. The wood block is, it's got some, there's still some wood blocking in the walls from where there had been some bookcases that were probably adhered to the wall at one point. Also, just some more scuff marks, some missing base. I'm not sure if that had been replaced. There was some blue tape around study room five, a smoke detector. Again, these were, these were all just like really kind of minor things, but things that, you know, we noticed when we go through. Yeah, that's, that's like, it's drywall. It's, yeah. Yeah. So the important image here is number 174, the gallery and theater hallway view. This one is really to bring it up to code compliance. It's a rather wide hallway. And there really should be, and Mark Porterfield is our code guru architect. And he was saying that we really should have an additional handrail that should be installed three feet from the existing handrail on the left. So Bob, can you, you have the pointer?
So see this handrail on the left? If someone were in a wheelchair going down that ramp and they needed to use the handrails, they only have one on one side. Code requires two handrails, one on each side. It'd be a little weird, right? Technically, it doesn't meet code. If this pitch of this ramp were shallow enough so that it didn't meet the definition of a ramp, there wouldn't be any handrails. But it does, so we're on compliance. But legal, because of the time it was done, it doesn't match code. I'm saying, you're good. But, you know, the code is a minimum. You can elect to be somebody in training today's.
So really what they need is a handrail toward the long, that walk on the wall.
No, three feet away from this really.
So somebody, like if they're in a wheelchair, they need to move both sides.
Oh, I see.
Decision.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, but, but the doors, you know, technically the top of the ramp is, the doors are where the entry is, the gallery, the theater, going up to the first picture. So the minute you're in and it starts to go down, there's no, there's no handrails. You know, the handrail starts a third, correct, a third of the way down. So like would your recommendation be to move that exit door? And, you know, make sure that the handrail is further up?
So this portion is flat. Because you can't have a pitching surface in front of doors. And every thirty feet along the run of the ramp, you need a level landing. So going on thirty feet, you get to the bottom, you need a level landing. So, no, you're okay. The only issue here is you don't have the other handrail.
Okay, so I think we can go on. Okay. The top photo is the double doors coming into the gallery. I think you have two sets. So there's just some delamination of the veneer. And the doors rub on the carpet when you open them. That's in the hallway. And then this is obviously the interior of the theater where we are, which needless to say, a lot of the finishes are rather dated. It could use a facelift. I think the one thing that we know was recently replaced were the curtains. So there's a lot of peeling of the paint in this room. I think the other thing too that was an issue were the handrails going up these stairs. They're actually rather flimsy, so.
So showing health. Building code requires that you can't move this with a pound of a hundred, with a force of about a hundred and fifty pounds. I think you have about two pounds on there. It's a simple fix, but you gotta deal with it.
Question. Can the crystal ball speak things?
And you do that. You are changing the exerted quality. So you gotta be careful.
The flooring on the stage, scuffed and scratched in many areas. There's a lot of peeling paint on the ceiling in the stage area. Somewhere behind, and I, there's, we were doing some moisture readings also throughout the building. And somewhere like in the center behind the curtain there, I don't know exactly where that ended up being, but there was a, there was a fairly high moisture reading in the center.
So if you take a look behind this curtain, you will see a lot of peeling paint. And that means water's gotten through that wall, through that paint, to push it off. And when there's water in a construction material and the moisture content gets this high, it starts to be concerning.
Right.
It's a localized problem, you gotta get to the bottom.
So the ceiling out in the vestibule here is sagging. The green section is where you took the painting down because we knew that that was gonna be problematic. The entry vestibule is, the carpet is worn and dated and there's peeling paint on the wall on the right-hand side as you walk into the entry vestibule. Then we go into the service and support zone. Technically, the information desk is part of that service and support zone. We also did light meter readings throughout the space. And we were coming up with very low light meter readings in a lot of areas, like at the the counter, at the information desk, they were very low, like ten. They should be thirty-five. So then we jump into the restrooms. So we know, we talked about, I think, the first restroom on the left-hand side where it's, we can't do anything about the bump out in the wall. So that one should not be, have the automatic door opener and the ADA sign on it. The other ones are fine. I think there were some issues with the flush valve motion sensors not activating. So those need to be looked at.
Well, it sucks.
Can you just go back one second? Because these bathrooms are relatively new, right? And so we're actually out of compliance in the thing that was constructed less than two or half.
The first one, the one on the left-hand, on the far left-hand side. I should come down the hall.
In 2018, maybe you have to have, you should have been sunned to that first. Because of the bump out in the wall.
I got it, okay.
Should have been any of the other.
Any of the other thing, got it?
Yeah, it's just that one.
Right.
Move this iron out.
Yeah. Then it's not a problem.
Exactly. Again, some slight damage. The water cooler is a little bit too high on the side approach for wheelchair access. Have to figure out a solution for that. Again, just, you know, some really small little maintenance issues with some water damage. Piece of base missing on, on the wall base missing. Jennifer, in your office. Scuff marks, tiles. The staff toilet is not ADA compliant, but it doesn't necessarily have to be if you have other ADA compliant restrooms. Okay. This goes into the staff lounge in the back area, I'm sorry, in the, in the, in this area back here, so there's a lot of water damage. The reference office, ceiling damage. This is the circulation staff area. There's just a lot of damage to millwork and flooring and chipboard. The fire rated door into the book drop area. The, the label for the fire rated door is painted over, which it should not be, but that's, that could be fixed. The time clock wiring is running over that door, secured with duct tape. So it's, in this room, it's a lot of miscellaneous, you know, the, the flooring is in really bad condition, the ceiling's in bad condition. Then we go into the back, this is the theater control room. And then this is the rear pantry area, which is back behind here. Yeah.
Does bathroom have to be ADA compatible?
Uh, this room here?
We made the audiovisual booth at the top of this auditorium.
Technically, yes, unless you can provide the same ability for someone to do that function in another way in another space.
Excuse me.
It would be really difficult here.
We just have four. But all the controls in the living room are also on that building, so.
And a new plan that allows them in a wheelchair to do the same thing.
So again, just, you know, a lot of areas of damage, flooring damage. Storage room. And then these are all the recommendations. And then we get into the MEP.
So we're droning on, how much do you want to go? We can go for the MEP stuff?
Can you get what's concerning?
Boilers are getting old. Chillers are getting old. Things are getting near the end of their useful life. Some service channels are missed labels.
We have Atlantic, and then West, if you can, on boiler issue.
Yeah.
You know, the, is that the side of the boiler that's like?
So, when you need to call people like Atlantic more frequently than you imagine you should have to, that means that the bones of the mechanical system are getting weakened and you're getting calls.
Your maintenance kind, your maintenance calls are getting.
And when you get leaky valves, leaky valves, faulty controls, improper heating and cooling, not able to balance comfort levels, and the system is very old, it's no longer had the goods job, and it's only 80% efficient. So you had a 98% condensing boiler heater, heating costs would have been very expensive. So, right, I think a very simple, robust mechanical system that, if it were more sophisticated, comfort could be provided for less money. On the flip side is, a simple fix, a simple system is easy to fix. Sophistication costs money, initial cost and then the price, and that price. So it's double exhausted. Some people go in, they put a brand new 86% efficient boiler in there, and keep it simple, and it's easy to fix. So, those are the questions we would have with you, discussions we would have with the design and the work ethic, bring the possibilities out. A fire alarm system. The devices are antiquated, they're working, but when you, it's when you start to need to do something to them, the wiring is no longer compliant, and the device can't be backward compatible with the fire alarm control panel, and it just unravels it. And all of a sudden, you need a new fire alarm system. It ought to be adjustable or innovative city station, or it doesn't work. The general yoga robust 1200 amp, 208, 330 is what this was. Generally find you some problems with some panels that don't have, like just some rocks and proper labels. Plumbing is a mishmash of everything, problem. Copper, cast iron, concrete, but assuming who knows about the aluminum, copper and cast iron, whether you're in a time, what, the, the, the. So you have some that, but it's localized and momentary, not hard to fix. A lot of piping goes under the slab, who knows? Piping has cast iron under a concrete slab that's horizontal, it's going to be a problem in some areas. Be smart to have a video camera, see what's the conditions. Just scroll through quickly the photos.
One more question. We supposedly had asbestos removed or wrapped 15 minutes ago. I don't presume there is asbestos, I've heard that you had a problem with asbestos.
I didn't see anything myself. Asbestos does not be illegal. You just need to management encapsulate it or obey it. So when it's pipe insulation, it's reliable, either cover it or get rid of it. Go back one. In this room, we've got your, your equipment. There typically wants to be air conditioning in that room, so the equipment doesn't overheat. Now you say, oh, this is no air conditioning, you have it for many years, it's working at this point. It's the temperature that degrades all the wire connections inside all those devices. So, something to think about. Lighting generally is a mix of everything. Everything had daylight harvesting controls, occupancy sensors, and then more sophisticated controls. You could get lower lighting bills, higher control. We've been in this room for about two hours now. Some of the lighting is new, some is old. How are you all, if you're at the high strain right now?
Tired.
Hitting it, right?
Yeah.
Say, oh, we're getting old and it's nine o'clock, yeah, we're getting tired. The lighting promotes it. And if you're at the right color temperature, in the light fixture, we would be able to go much longer.
It's all the mechanical.
Yeah, units up in the cooling power, it's.
What's the age of that cooling tower?
No, I have to ask you. It's, it's, they're recommended. And if you're going to put in a new system.
It wouldn't look like that, but.
Well, it depends on what kind of system.
Yeah, yeah.
You could do a new BAC cooling tower. Look at this right now. You could do a geothermal system or. Believe it or not, if we did a deep energy retrofit on this building's envelope, the walls and the roof, that super insulated it, fix all the windows, and put in all of the key pumps, it can actually save money. Really depends on what your mindset is in terms of environmental consciousness, sustainability. You don't push one or the other, there's a whole spectrum, it's something to think about. Simple thing is just replace what's there. And you get another 30 to 40 years out of this one, and the next group will deal with it for years. Or think in order to sustain. We can add you to that whole spectrum. That's, uh, chiller, which is, you know, you don't see chills like existed. It's working. Oftentimes, we run into problems where we can't get replacement parts anymore. And then thou must replace the chiller. Chiller water pumps.
These are all the recommendations.
These are. This report is broken down into immediate, in near term, medium term, long term recommendations. Do it now, do it soon, do what you can. Deal with the walls, because it's not going to get any better. You've got to deal with the nice smell walls and the coping. Here's some copper going into cast iron, going under. We didn't see any active leaks. Doesn't mean there aren't any. You see a lot of stains on the ceiling, that means there's a lot of piping on the ceiling. It's either from old roof leaks, which are stopped with the coating on the roof, or water's getting into the coping and then running along the top side of the ceiling, stains of ceiling tile or sagging. Uh, you have heaters or sinks, hot water sinks, everywhere. Old fashioned, point of use, how long?
That's efficient, isn't it?
Well, so, the tanks.
Yeah.
If the sink is here, and I put the hot water heater right here, and I've got a sink over there, and I put the hot water heater right there, and I turn this on, hot water right there, and it's. If I put 100 gallon water tank over there, and I turn this on on the left, and now I sent 14 gallons of that right down the drain. So, in a lot of high-energy retrofit buildings, we do electric point of use heaters, because it's expensive spark electricity to heat that water, but it's considered a second. And for caution hands in the last, it'd be caution issues. You might not need highly ingredients. Maybe it's not. That burn electricity might have run the rest.
Let's see, appliances.
Roof drains.
Trains.
We have the roof number, you've got a white coating on there, the high, high albedo coating, it reflects a lot of heat. You leave the product on there, it doesn't reflect the heat and absorb the heat. Money, okay. High priority, million one eight. Next. Medium priority, 2.1. Next. Low priority, 3.6. Total, six, which includes a bunch of contingencies. Because when you're in an existing building, who shows up first? Murphy shows up, and then, right, so.
Oh, and then Bob, we have the maintenance.
And maintenance.
Sorry.
Right. But we've got to avoid mentioning the maintenance.
So with maintenance, it's nine.
Nine.
Where it says clean garden goals, I'm reading across the 21, there's 7,000.
It's a range.
That's a range, to get it to current looks longer than now, but then we have to take it into account, maintenance, correct?
So, there's a lot.
You're suggesting that's for maintenance?
Right.
It depends on how, and something moves or breaks or cracks, so it might be once a year, it might be once every few years or five years. The important thing is that you have eyes and ears in your facility approach, walking around and looking at, and not just looking at the ground or, you know, thinking about economic. So, you see something, say something. If you fix it now, it's a false sense. You wait five years, it's all hung up. That's it, right?
That's it, or we could start over.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
If you need another reading, you want us to walk around and show you all the stuff in Jersey, we're happy to do that too.
I think we have a lot to discuss.
Yes, absolutely.
We work on libraries all the time, we've done over 160 library projects. We work on historic buildings, we work on existing buildings. And our sort of focus is low carbon equipment, sustainability, keeping existing buildings robust, and in trouble, it makes a good hat. This building only a month, a hundred years, take care of that. As a good steward of the hardware.
So, this may be an unfair question, but part of me is feeling like for way too long, simple maintenance wasn't time. Is that a fair conclusion?
We try not to use the word negligence, we call it the bird maintenance. But people, it's like this VCT floor, right, it's, they're always, nobody uses it anymore since, or 70s. And you've got a strip and waxing it, which is not environmentally conscious. So when you do, work, rip off something that's perfectly sound, decorate something environmentally conscious, and it's been a whole lot of, put a whole lot of carbon in the air.
Right, but we're not stripping and waxing it, so we're not.
Yeah, so if you say.
So then, right?
Yeah.
Well, you said it's about choices, right?
So everything's carefully prioritized by category?
Yeah.
That's what we run through all the time. My recommendation is think about the things that are the most important on high priority list.
Yes.
And tackle those. Don't run by the whole, it's too much. You can't afford it, and it's, it's, were you going to close for me? Your library is still.
Right.
We're really good at sequencing what's at least.
Yeah, I think that's where it does really, it seems to get shut off on this sequence.
But that's also there.
Absolutely.
Right?
Thank you very much. Want to think about?
Okay, um, it's really so well done.
A lot of line items.
Yes. It's so cool. It's cool. Okay, we lost George. Okay. I'm going to close out. Yes.
Yeah, he said he had to leave early, yeah. Yeah.
Where are we, where?
Okay.
The children's library.
So Marilyn and I actually had a conversation on the phone today, a brief conversation. And I'm going to have a conversation with Robin and figure out, and I know Marilyn's brought some lighting people in to talk about the lighting issues. So I would like to have a three-way conversation with myself, Robin, and Marilyn, and of course Bob, you, if you want to be, just to figure out, make sure we're all on the same page and know how we're stepping forward from here. I think right now, what the children's room wanted to see were just some options.
Which were still working.
Absolutely, right, so, yeah. But I want to, because I was so fixated on this, I wanted to make, you know, talk to you guys all together and make sure that we were all on the same page.
No, it was.
Thank you so much for everything given.
Thank you, thanks Marilyn, thanks Bob, thank you, it was excellent. Okay, moving down the agenda. Is there anything else that needs to, John, Jen, report to? Okay, so it's moved that the board adjourned the public meeting at?
One other thing, I just, I think that there's so much here to digest.
Oh, yes.
I'm just wondering, a, a, a public meeting might be a hard time for us to digest all of this, so we might need to schedule something.
A special meeting. Correct.
I don't mean to put more meetings on people's calendars, but it seems as though this, this needs some time to.
Well, I do, I do think first off, we're given two of these copies, so I think we should lend them out to each other.
Is there a PDF version floating around?
Yeah, we'll get a PDF version.
Okay. So John, if you, I think Jen's going to take this copy for home.
You want this copy?
No, that's okay, you can look at it first, absolutely. And then we'll just share, we'll share between us.
Yeah.
This is good for all of you.
Tomorrow, okay.
John, one thing we talked about too is we, at some point, we have to bring in a school district.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
We're building. I'm really unclear about furniture. I think their furniture rights are whatever existed in 1970, whatever. So I think that's off the table for them, but mechanical building.
No, I understand, yeah, and I, I think that's important.
They are, they are already aware that, you know, we were doing, we were doing this work. So, and I actually ran into Josh Cullen Block at the Rotary meeting last week, and so he and I had a brief discussion. I said that Lothric would be here, and we just agreed that we would just stay in touch and keep each other informed.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
We, we should find out who is their BNG person.
Oh, I have, I have their BNG person's contact. So when you want to meet, if you want those folks to be here, I will extend that invitation to them.
Sorry, just to make sure that I may not have been clear. We need to be clear on who their BNG board person is, and then that, and they should be invited. And then they will likely invite their.
Maintenance? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the person that's in the district.
Okay.
Can I find out who the board person is?
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Right. Yes, that the, I first, we just first wanted the board to hear and be exposed and and be able to digest it.
Right.
I'll send an email to Josh and Christine tomorrow and just let them know that we have this one more, more to come.
Correct, that's great.
Then we should have, you know, a couple books sent to them.
Okay.
No problem.
And I, I could send them PDF versions in the meantime, but I'll send.
That's greener.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even better.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks.
Good.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I said it quietly, but, but less quietly, thank you for recommending this course of action and this firm, because it was excellent.
I'm really glad.
We're all very aware that we went for an RFP and hired a firm to evaluate mostly exterior improvements, but this level of detail is so needed for such an old building and such an important building.
Yes.
I'm glad, I'm glad you guys are pleased. I mean, they've worked a couple of years, they're great. Happy that they're consistent.
I love their prioritizing.
Very worked hard for that.
Thank you for that, thank you for saying that.
It's moved that the board adjourned this, this public meeting at 9:08 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
We're good.
All right. Good night, you guys.